All this meeting to order at 4:30, we can start with the pledge of allegiance. Lights outside the back window.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the second meeting that we've had on the budget. I believe before we start, we want to go into non-public. Under?
Um, 93A.
93A.
Three, section, section two.
Okay, roll call, vote. Frank, Andrea.
Aye.
Aye.
We're in at 4:30.
Okay, we're back in session here. I know we left off on page 2320.
Did you want to take a vote?
I do. We left off on page 2322, but we have some other things to do. We had a motion by Andrea, seconded by Frank, to adjust our early retirement buyout incentive so that teachers at age 55 could consider it. And who, all those in favor? And the superintendent will let staff know as soon as possible. Okay, and again, we were on 2320, but our, we were going to do some special ed things and I don't know what page.
1200 series.
No, if I can pick up the 1200.
Yep.
We had a couple of things, we had 1200.
Yep.
And then the reg, the related services. And then we had a whole pocket, and I have a handout for you about the, all of the non-union salaries impacted by what's budgeted in here as a 2.5% raise.
Okay.
So I'll give you that when I'm ready.
Okay, so we're on 1202. Is that what you're on? Okay. So we're looking at $1,039,335.
And these are the, there's two, there's two things happening here, just to make sure. We have all of the contracted staff positions that we currently have. And then we have added one position, a program, a program teacher. That program was in your info, under the info tab. Experiential learning program, and that's part of why we waited until tonight so that we could have a brief conversation with Parsons and ask any questions we might have about that program. So except, there's, we're picking up one after you. We budgeted for one additional teaching position.
So can you give a brief overview to the rest?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, sometimes the traditional learning setting of a general education classroom is not able to meet all of the needs of our students. And so that becomes tricky sometimes in a middle school setting because our case managers are either providing direct instruction to our students in a small group setting, or they're doing inclusion. And if a child is having difficulty or needs an alternative curriculum, it's been difficult to program for those students because there, it's, there's just not enough availability in their schedules because of the, um, the way the classes run. So what I'm proposing is an opportunity to provide this experiential learning program, which will include a lot of hands-on academic opportunities for students, again, who may not necessarily benefit from the regular education setting. And it would be designed for those kids that have more of an intensive instructional need and that may need also a functional academic and daily life skills as part of their programming. However, it would not supplant the typical reading, writing, math, and science, and social studies. It would be a supplement and complement and essentially just provide opportunities for students to learn skills such as money handling, counting change, paying for goods, and then including in their reading and writing skills just the functional use of those things. So, you know, part of, um, building life skills is essential. And it's not just as essential for kiddos that have lower cognition. It's essential for anyone in, in living. And I think it's, uh, it's our job in some senses to provide children with sound judgment, good habits for long-term stability. And I think that for some kids, that'll engage them more because it's experiential in learning versus abstract with some of the concepts. So the goal would be able to link it to the curriculum as much as we can in terms of the standards, but to be mindful about what's going to engage them with their thinking skills, their social skills, and their emotional skills. So any questions about? So I'm looking for a teacher to actually, we'll obviously have the space next year, which is really exciting. But I'm looking for a teacher to staff and be fully responsible for the students within this program and their modifications of the curriculum and providing the direct instruction around the functional skills, including whatever that would be in terms of the subject area, whether it be reading, writing, math, science, social studies, and modifying it and connecting as much as they can to the general education curriculum, but also providing it in an experiential way for them. And potential, and with that, we can take them out into the community and give that opportunity for them to generalize some of those skills over. So if we were working on money, for instance, we may do a whole unit on money and purchasing things like going out, you know, looking at a menu, being able to figure out, you know, how do you order off of a menu, then maybe going to La Sola's and having them practice those skills. Additionally, looking at a recipe, figuring out what's needed to purchase, to, um, to make that recipe, and then go to the supermarket, purchase those things, interact with cashiers. Also bringing kids out into the community where they may not understand the difference between a stranger and someone who's not a stranger and working on some of those social communication skills. And then, you know, there is a kitchen at Hampton Academy, which we'll have access to, so being able to then utilize those recipe, learning how to read a recipe, creating those things. And then, you know, I'd love to be able to, once they make something, maybe they could sell it to, in the teacher's room, or they could sell it, you know, walking around to teachers, things like that. And then, again, learning how to interact, learning how to, the exchange of money, those types of things. So, um, any questions?
Do, do we have someone currently employed in SAU 90 that has the skills to do this job?
Do I think so? Absolutely.
Okay, so we do have someone currently employed with us that could take on this position?
I think has the skill set.
Okay.
Absolutely.
You know, we've been concerned, and you can only see that in the tuition accounts. You know, we've spent a lot of money. We have six or seven youngsters out, outplaced. And we feel that by bringing the kinds of placements home to Hampton and keeping the kids in their, their community is far better than busing them an hour away to private schools at significant costs.
It's pricey.
Yes.
So ballpark, you could probably look it up and find it, but how many students do we have to educate somewhere else right now?
How many do I have currently?
Yeah.
In, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay. And what is your estimate of those eight that could be served by this program?
So...
So you, so we would save on tuition?
Right, so, again, I'm trying to be proactive. So some of these kids that are currently in, in, out of district placements might not be eligible in terms of grade level because I want to start at the middle school, right? So it would be six, seventh, and eighth. Of those, of these kids that would potentially be able to access this, access this program, I have at least three, potentially four, that eventually would, once they got to middle school level, would, would be appropriate for this programming.
How far away are they from middle school?
Uh, to, some of them are two years. Alternatively, I have some students now that I feel if we don't provide programming right now, or not right now, but in the upcoming years, that it potentially could go there as well. So I'm trying to combat, um, potential placements. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
And so my question is, are you talking for next year? Yeah. Are you talking one, two?
I think we could have four kiddos in this program.
Next year?
Yeah.
Under this budget? And if we did that, these, these are kids that are being educated elsewhere right now?
No.
Oh, they're not?
Of those four right there.
They might be educated elsewhere next year. If they're not educated, with a better program here.
So here's the difference.
I get it.
Yes.
This is cost avoidance, rather.
Right, so, so if, if we were going to do that, what would you estimate the cost? Because I know you can't tell a program and you got to get them in and so on and so on.
At $120,000 a pop, not including transportation.
That's what you...
For two, for two kids that I'm including in that four next year, I think if we don't provide the appropriate programming, they could go out of district at $120,000 a year plus transportation.
Or $1 million plus, plus trans.
So when she said she wanted to spend 85 on a program, I said, okay, propose it.
Any other questions, folks?
But we have, so you're proposing to hire a new person to take care of this? Or are you asking to switch a position you currently have with the individual?
I'm asking to create, because what, here's, here's the, what'll end up happening is if we don't create a new position, majority of those kids are highly intensive needs. And to have that person also have an additional caseload of kids, they couldn't do both. I want this person to fully staff a self-contained program.
So, let me ask you a question. Could the current case managers, okay, if, if one of them left to become this experiential learning program person, what would that do to the other caseload, case managers, caselots? Ballpark estimate.
Uh, I mean, it would probably create their caselots to go up by four or five each.
How would that be?
Are you suggesting that, it's a little confusing. Are you suggesting that, because Jess is suggesting that we add a position to the current?
I know.
If we don't add it and we take someone away and they have a caseload of eight to 10, then you have four people that are
Going to pick up those.
Pick up all of those cases.
I, I just want to know the impact.
Yeah.
I don't know if it can be done, but what I do know
My other concern is the scheduling.
Yeah, well, I do know first that, you know, this is a year where we're hitting the taxpayers with the academy bill. And so when we're talking about adding positions, in my mind, I, I think 100,000 with benefits and this and that. I might be low, I might be high. So I'm just asking if it could be done. I don't know if it even should be done, but I'm asking if it could be done.
I, in all honesty, if I, I, I want to do this program with fidelity and I want to do it appropriately. So if that was the option, I would not, I probably would not have that done because I wouldn't want it to impact the rest of the students in terms of getting their needs met, because the, the...
Well, the program would still be done with fidelity because you're taking a person out and then they're doing that program.
But the rest of the programming would, would be impacted by it because you'd be taking a case manager out and with the, there's currently two at sixth grade, and I need to keep two there because the numbers are so large.
So, your professional opinion is that it really can't be done?
Correct.
That's all I needed to hear.
Yep, sorry.
Any other questions, folks?
Well, I, I have a concern, okay? We added a position to special ed last year, okay? You know...
We added it two years ago.
Two years ago.
It hit the budget, it hit the budget last year.
But we, yeah. It hit the budget this year, okay? My concern is, okay, we're, we're keep adding positions, okay? And I'm a little concerned in how the taxpayers are going to take this, okay? They're already going to be hit with some, some sizable increases from the town budget, which I'm dealing with right now. And I, I understand where Jess is coming from, but, you know, I, I don't, I think if we can translate a, a position, you know, just kind of internally, it'd probably be more appeasable and then to add a position at 120 plus. That, that's my only concern in how the, you know, the taxpayers are going to take this. The other thing is, have you looked at a behavioral specialist in your program? Because you have a lot of behavioral problem, I mean, that we, we've been dealing with.
So here's, here's what I think. Behavior is a form of communication, correct? And if we, if we program for kids correctly and we provide them the right type of instruction in the right type of setting, that typically decreases the behavior. So my goal for this program, I'm not going to call it a behavior program, but my goal would be for those kids who are struggling in the classroom and sometimes present with behaviors, that this would be an option and a place for them to go. So, um, even for those kids that may not be on this teacher's direct caseload, if they are having some difficulties and, and, and having some behaviors, that this would be a place for them to go, maybe settle themselves down, maybe be able to, to get themselves back to class. Because right now, there isn't, there is that, there is no place for them to go at Hampton Academy if they are struggling with their behavior. There's no teacher to go to, there's no...
You're, you're talking about special ed kids?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because if their case manager is doing direct instruction or doing inclusion in another classroom, I mean, they do, they'll, they'll sometimes leave to support their kid, but at the same time, that's also impacting other services, correct?
They can't go to the planning room?
The pla...
Ah, yes, that doesn't talk about...
No. Doesn't seem to be an option.
Frank, is that you?
Well, I'm wondering why it couldn't be an option, that's all.
Lloyd, you heard it, did I didn't?
I would just ask that I feel that by reducing the number of special education teachers at the middle school in order to accommodate this program would be a disservice to them. Their caselots, I mean, they're, they're running 10 and 12 now. I'm concerned that I would have them up too high. And this is a very difficult age to begin with, coupled with some significant learning issues. So that's one thing to think about. The second is, this is really proactive on your part to try to contain costs rather than sending tuition bill, money out via tuition. So that's how we looked at it, containing costs and then our inability to add any more to the current caselots of our special education teachers at Hampton Academy. And by the way, you have the great, the highest number of special ed youngsters coming in your sixth grade this year, which required you to have two teachers there. And they're going seventh grade, so, um, the numbers are high. It just happened, you know how that works. It ebbs and flows in terms of numbers, but please consider those two issues.
I'm looking at that, but we're talking about possibly four students, right?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into non-public.
Okay.
Under?
I say... 91 dash A, colon, 3, 2, A.
Second?
Second.
Second, Pepper. Roll call?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. We are back into public. And we were looking through what page?
1202.
Okay, and I think we've had quite a bit of discussion on that. Do you want to take a vote on that now, folks?
Um, what?
1200 dash 2.
Uh, I'd like to defer the vote at least down until after we've gone through everything because we're looking at an increase, a significant increase in that 1200 account. So I think what we should do is look and see how we can defer some of those costs or defray some of those costs. So at least it's more appropriate and more appealing to the voters.
Well, it's my thought, only my thought, that we can go back and revisit anything.
If that's the case, then that's fine.
Okay, so I, I think we should go forward with a vote. If we want to go back and revisit, we can.
And how much are we adding to that 1200? Let's get the exact number.
We have, we have the exact number.
200.
It's in your book.
Yeah, I have the book.
On page 1202.
I got it. Okay.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Move to Andrea.
Second.
Second, Pepper. Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Yes. And we go to page 1200 dash 3. These are the special ed aides.
So this number changes two reasons. We actualized, there's no raises included here because we're negotiating with a paraprofessional's warrant. Article 2 will be that collective bargaining agreement. So any new money for the raises would be there. But I have actualized based on the people that are actually working and what their rates of pay are. And we have identified and added one, um, one preschool paraprofessional position. You'll see it as the third line down, TBH. It's a, it's a full-time, a full day, but it's only a four-day-a-week. You'll see that the third line under center. So that total change there in price is not for rates of pay, it's for that position.
Motion?
Motion.
Move to Pepper?
Move to second.
Second, Andrea, discussion? All those in favor? Frank, did you vote yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, 5, 0, 0. Four, 4, 0, 0, I'm sorry. Put on that last one, five, it's four. Okay, we're into special ed tutors, 1204.
Motion to second?
Well, I, my only question is, we haven't, we haven't used much.
We haven't, we didn't have, at, last year we didn't have as many, the last two years, we didn't have as many hospitalizations where they would need tutoring. Because when they're there, we're, we're obligated to provide that.
But, but you don't know. You don't know.
Again, I don't know. So if they're, then we need to have the...
Well, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion on that. I, I would, I would move that we reduce that by $4,000. So it's going to be 4,850. I'm sorry. We're, we're going to just make it around 5,000. Okay. If we, if we have to add to, if we have to add to that.
I have to, yeah, I have a choice.
I don't want to leave the account bare. Is there a second for that?
Sure.
I'll, I'll second.
Frank?
Yeah.
Second, Frank, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
In your notes, a quick adjustment. So I'd ask you to take the default budget number, which you see right now is 75, 228. That default budget number should be 73, 710. 73, 710. And here's the reason. The B C B A position is not collectively bargained, it's not a union position. I applied the 2.5%. So the difference between that default and that proposed is the 2.5%. The rest of it is flat. You know what I mean? So, um, I just want to clarify that. So that's part of what you're talking about with 2.5%. That position.
So are we thinking the same person would be doing this position?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, she's certified.
So they only, uh, they only made 54,000? And we're proposing 75?
So, um, they did not have their certification when we originally hired them in 1718. They were like waiting for their board and so we wouldn't, we didn't give the full salary, like that was part of their work agreement, until they actually had the certification. So that's where, um, that had gone up. So it was like a carrot in, in some senses to get them to finish. So that's why you see some of the increase. And the other is the registered behavior technician, registered behavior technician, which was part of an IEP service that I needed to provide. So that is a registered, it's a certification that was needed for a, a child. I, I could very, um, in trying to be fiscally responsible, I mean, I could, I could drop the ABA training down. This was an anticipated need because of the preschool kiddos coming in, needing that specific programming. So having to train the staff in there around that, but, um...
No, you need to leave it.
I, I can drop, I mean, I could drop it down to 1,000. I just don't know if I get, I, we don't, the problem is, is preschool kids, when they turn 2.5 and then 3, and then, so I don't know what I don't know. And so based on what has come in this year in terms of what their needs are, I try to, um, program for that. So be ready. Be ready.
Motion?
Motion.
Moved, Pepper? Seconded.
I'll second.
Andrea, and this is for the 75, 228?
No.
73, 710.
73, 710, and then if you agree on the 2.5 later, we'll plug that in or whatever, you agree.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? 4, 0, 0. Okay.
This one is, to be consistent, you've been tabling these because they're connected to the 2.5.
And the clerical?
Same, same.
Can I, we can have a discussion on salary increases?
Yeah, we've been tabling, I mean, we can do whatever.
We've been tabling them all, so once we come, they'll all fit that, right?
Whatever you decide.
The clerk's salaries here actually go down a smidge because we hired a new person who's working at a lower rate. Jane, Jane Lowell retired from that position and Kim Bryant has, has taken over her slot.
So we're on 1206. We didn't use any money?
It's new for this year. This is 1819, it's the first year and, um, so there's no actual there before. And this is an hourly, this is based on hourly or day consumption outside of the contract. If there's time spent in the summer months or holidays, weekends, not weekends, holidays, vacations, or otherwise outside of the contract. It's a teaching position, and so this is not a stipend that's going to just flat out be paid. This is, thank you for coming in on a day when we weren't working and doing some additional hours because of this work or that. Thank you for staying after or working on another day when we had to do a scheduled meeting, right?
And, and...
Is this hourly or salary?
Hourly, I, I read it.
Hourly.
Yes.
So what is hourly rate?
Well, right now I'd have to pull that individual's... You know what I mean?
Oh, this isn't all teachers, this is just one?
This is, this is that, that, that compliance, that LEA position we're talking about that's working on IEP compliance and, and meetings and serving as the LEA at, at those meetings across the two buildings.
But that's a salary position.
Not in the summer, going every day.
But if I, if I need to...
Not in the summer?
Yeah, not in the summer.
Okay.
So I'm just going to ask the, the question, why, why wouldn't it be his daily rate that he gets during the school year?
It is, yeah, it would be. And then we would just...
But we don't know what that is?
It's like, ah, let me go back.
Oh, well, we'd...
We didn't, we didn't tag it specifically because when we put the 5,500 together, it wasn't based on...
I didn't know who it was, we didn't know.
It was a rough, it was a rough calculation, but he's, um... It's about 41 bucks an hour for that individual.
So divide 5,500 by 41. I'm curious how many hours it comes up.
Yep, 134.
134 hours?
Yep.
And divide that by, uh...
Seven is 19 days.
19 days? Okay.
Okay.
And I don't have to utilize them, but part of the, part of the, what I was looking for is five days at the end of school, maybe, um, five in July, depending if a parent requesting a referral meeting. I need a, I actually need a staffed, I need a special education certified teacher and then, um, to start to get all of the planning process ready for IEPs at the start of the school year.
So...
That makes sense, because I think when we put the 5,500 together, it was 20, it was 20 days
It's 20 days.
At an M3 or an M4, something in the middle of the road when we plugged it in.
So if that person is not available, can other special ed staff do it?
Yep.
So we, I don't know, we want to clarify it, but so that they get their hour, at their hourly rate, which might not be the same as his hourly rate.
But it would just come out of that pool of mine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Motion on this one? Frank? Second, Pepper? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Uh extended year program.
So the, again, student needs, you know, the program is what it is. Remember that when we budget for this, we actually get this done first thing. This is July program, July into August. So in the notes I gave you, the the number is going to forty-five for next year. This summer it was forty-two, six seventy-five. You don't see that actual yet because it's eighteen nineteen, but we spent almost forty-three this year, so.
And how many individuals take advantage of that program?
We had um upwards of about fifty-four this year.
And that's K A.
Correct. Oh, pre-K, I'm sorry, pre-A.
Pre-K, right, I forgot that.
Can we get a motion on this? Pepper, second?
I'll second it.
Seconded Frank, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Four zero. Workshop seminars?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Move Andrea, seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded Pepper, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, professional services?
Motion to move.
Move Pepper? Seconded Andrea? We um we didn't move, we didn't, we used ten. And we're proposing fifteen. This is under discussion.
Can we cut this one?
I'm kinda asking.
So um part of what I have come into um play is um students who require uh I E P services during extracurricular activities or during during um things such as uh trips um where they need an an aid with them. And so being able to to have, like with the D C trip, um I don't know what the trip is in advance prior to the budget season, so I just need to have some um because I by, I'm mandated to send somebody with them if it's in their I E P.
Or an identified student decides to participate on the track team or goes on a course.
We didn't have any, we didn't, so I've been, we've been doing it, but there there's no, there was no account for it, so.
You might wanna include that specific, what you just said to us.
Okay.
In next year's narrative.
Yes, absolutely.
Um it's been moved, seconded? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Evaluations? Motion? Frank? Second, Pepper? Discussion? All those in favor? I mean, it's self-explanatory. I'm shocked that we only spend a hundred and sixty-two dollars in legal.
I only called Derek one last year. I use my, I use my resources.
I'm I'm shocked that you could talk to him for an hour, it would only be a hundred and sixty-two dollars.
I didn't, I talked to him for ten minutes, I'm just kidding, I got.
No, I was just having a conversation.
I know their time is valuable, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Try to use my resources as much as possible.
Sure. Motion?
Motion.
Pepper? Second? Frank? Discussion? All those in favor? Carrie's four zero. Leasing, motion?
I'll motion, make a motion.
Move Pepper? Seconded Andrea? Any discussion? Again, it is what it is.
No, exactly.
All those in favor?
And remember the next one.
Move Pepper? This is telecom, seconded Andrea? All those in favor? Okay. We're hoping that might reduce a little?
Well, I'd like to make, are we discussing uh?
We're on.
Twelve hundred and ten?
Uh yes.
Yes.
All right. That's a significant increase. It went from seven, oh, I'm gonna round the numbers. The adapted budget is six ninety-six, nine eighty. The actual spent in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen was six forty-five. All right, and now we're jumping almost, almost eighteen percent?
No, you're jumping.
So let's look at.
Hi Johnny, you wanna go to an obvious replacement, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's not a.
But we're already talking about putting the position in at a hundred thousand.
Not for that kid, though.
Well, that's a big jump, right? Your your act, your adopted budget in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen is six ninety-six.
Right.
Nine eighty. And so you're you're proposing an increase of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
I believe three kids were not accounted for in last year's budget because they came in.
Late.
Late, they came in off budget. Like I didn't plan for them because they weren't here, they enrolled after.
So three at a hundred and twenty is three hundred and sixty.
I'm curious, because I'd like for us to do, I mean, like, we're gonna go to the budget committee. For me, like, for me, for us probably, the way we know this account and this concept, there isn't any conversation. Like this has got, this got eight names on it and eight price tags for eight schools that aren't here. But we haven't communicated that, and I'm curious, because I'd like to do this process better, so to look at that and go, that's kinda going up kinda steep. Well, no, no, that's, like, that's, I mean, I could name the schools, we'd have to go non-public in, right? And I know you don't want me to do that, so help me make the narrative make more sense, because this is very stingy narrative, to explain what this is, right?
That's right, first of all. First of all, I think a lot of the public understands, and we understand. If a family takes a right off of ninety-five.
Yeah, here they are. But.
That's it. And the, and we're legally obligated.
No, I understand that.
And.
But it's, you know, uh but I, we get so stingy because we don't wanna share any identified information because there's protections for the identified students, right? And yet, this is a huge chunk of your tax dollar, and I I gotta come up with a better way.
Almost a million dollars.
It is, almost a million bucks. I gotta come up with a better way to communicate this, although we get really stingy, right? So we didn't give you the eight schools and the eight price tags. Shh, I gotta tell you, when she handed that, when she handed that to the superintendent, I fell on my chair, but I, I.
I can share it with you.
No, I I.
I wanna hit the budget committee up with good, good information, so help me with this one, you know what I mean, anything I can come up with.
We, we, we get it. We get it.
And and just, and and Frank, one of those placements is not a hundred and twenty, just given. Right, so it's an average, I get, but plus transportation, so I said a hundred and twenty plus.
I know, but when you're presenting, it's like what Nate said, when you're presenting to the budget committee, it's, they're looking at it as a million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, I know it's eight hundred and thirty-two. They'll round to a million. And they're gonna say you were at seven hundred thousand.
Total line, he's saying.
But it's.
And maybe I could just list.
It's a legal obligation.
That I know, I'm the first one that knows that.
I should put that in, right?
Okay, I think that's what you gotta say, it's a legal obligation that we need to provide services to select members of.
We don't have any control.
It's a, that team, that I E P team, right, makes a decision about what's in the best interest of the student.
We're locked into that, that's what I think you gotta say, we're locked.
I wanna come up with a better way, so I'll make, I'll reference legal obligation, and then maybe I can not list the school names or certain.
Legal obligation under federal law.
Or just list their tuition.
School A.
Just the tuition bills, right?
School A, school B, schools C, I don't know.
A B C. Yeah.
Yeah, and I would say it's a legal federal obligation.
Thank you. That'll help.
Can you add a verbiage in there around your reimbursements?
I could say that that, these, these all kinda special education aid, we get X number of dollars back next year.
That we do receive a hundred thousand from the state.
It's in next year's revenue, not this year, but that helps soften some, thank you, guys.
Maybe we should do that.
Every year I see this, I think, ah.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion Pepper, second? Frank? Further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Travel reimbursement, we didn't spend a lot.
Yeah. We, yeah, because our uh charter, because we're obligated to provide services for charter school students. Um we have, don't have any currently, um or one left mid-year last year.
Yeah, we, that's gone.
So I mean, we could certainly reduce this, but again, it's one of those things where I don't know if a kid decides to go to G Vex next year or um C C O charter school.
You don't know. Could we?
I'd just say keep it the way it is.
Or we.
Well, I was gonna suggest, and tell me if it's too low, to fifteen hundred.
To fifteen. Perfect, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Is that too low?
Nope, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. My second?
Second, I move fifteen hundred, seconded Andrea? Further discussion? All those in favor, four zero zero.
Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
I did.
Les, Les did, I seconded. Thank you.
So um again, we only use two hundred and forty-five dollars.
So two things happening here. One, um we, we do have some equipment dollars and supply dollars, I should say supply, sorry, some supply dollars that make their way into the I D A grant and sometimes specific, because this is not, this is not supposed to be specifically um, hey, special ed people here in the office need a notepad, right? This is supplies for um special services, special needs. Um and so what happens is that quite frequently, those can get picked up on occasion with the grant. They get picked up in the building by the principal's teaching line, and they don't ever get here. What we've added that it, that, so normally it's been two grand. The jump is this extended learning program, I mean, this uh um experiential learning program we just got done talking about, uh the budget calls for, if you go back and look at the narrative, there's twenty-two hundred and eight dollars worth of material that was anticipated to, for the program. So the jump is for that. You can see that two years ago, we spent sixteen hundred.
Last year I took it all out of the grant, I took, I went grant first, um because I had the additional money in there and I didn't put it through district.
Last year. You got all the grant?
Motion? Pepper? Second? Frank? Discussion?
What if you reduced it to two thousand two hundred and eight? What kind of impact is that gonna have?
Um I, I don't necessarily know, because I don't know what the grant funding will be next year, um but I mean.
Well, I think the in- indicators I have um just is it's gonna be lower.
It's gonna stay the same.
Yeah, maybe a slight increase, but not much.
So I would feel comfortable taking out.
I guess if I thought maybe the O T P T office consumables, can we fill that in somewhere else?
Yeah, we can take that one out, and then I'm thinking the refreshments.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And the stamps and the return, I I can't put that through the grant.
Testicle. Yeah, and testicle.
I should reduce it by fifteen hundred, um.
Twenty-seven.
Here we're talking seven. I I I I'm, I just say keep it the way it is. You're talking pennies on the dollar right now. Actually, you're talking half of the dollar.
But when I go back to try to bal- balance the issues of what you, what she asked for and the, and the bottom line of the budget, I need to go to places that I can cut. Because that's what you indicated earlier, so I'm, I'm kinda supporting what Andrea's trying to do.
I understand that, I understand that, but you know. A thousand, a thousand dollars, you know, you're you're.
Well, a thousand here and a thousand there, you know. It's, it's all you can do, because we're limited so much with.
Right, especially in this account.
So um Pepper made the motion for forty-two oh eight. Um did somebody have a friendly amendment for that?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment and adjust that to two thousand five hundred.
Okay, so first, Pepper, do you wanna withdraw your motion?
I would.
I withdraw, Frank's gonna withdraw his second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and um Andrea, can you make a new motion?
I'd like to make a motion to uh with the adjusted cost of twenty-five hundred dollars on account, twelve hundred eleven.
Seconded Pepper?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Four zero.
And software, I mean, I think that's self-explanatory.
Software. Exactly.
Yeah.
Motion, Andrea? Seconded Pepper? Any discussion? All those in favor? Equipment?
I have a kiddo who's gonna need a F M system, and I'm, we also are gonna need an O T swing, um but it's, it's breaking, um so I, and those are um. So all that we didn't spend any last year, it's.
No, what's the F M cost?
Um.
Ballpark.
It, like, third.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-eight hundred?
Yeah, thirty-five hundred, yeah.
Okay, and what is the swing?
The swing, shipping and everything was close to three, was close to three thousand.
Um free shipping on Amazon, two Christmas.
I don't think we can use Amazon.
Uh motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Andrea? Seconded? Frank? Frank?
Yeah.
Second, yeah. Further discussion? So this is the count for sixty-two hundred, all those in favor?
All right.
Do self-explanatory here.
Move.
Move Pepper? Seconded Andrea? Discussion? All those in favor? Four zero.
Um Mister DeLuca has a budget meeting, and would you like to take a fifteen minute break?
I know he does.
And we got an hour.
Yeah.
Fifteen minute break, he can have a little something to eat before he goes, fifteen minutes.
Take a quick break?
Yeah, well, we'll just work through.
Well, I was thinking of giving you a little something to eat.
Well, we wanna eat.
Why, can't you eat and work at the same time?
I, I can't multitask.
Fifteen, ten minutes.
All right.
Ten minutes.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Session, uh I believe we're on page fourteen hundred one, extracurricular?
So we voted?
No, we've already done that.
Yeah, we did. Um.
Help me out with the page.
Well, fourteen hundred and two? Well, talk about fourteen hundred three, we tabled that one.
What, tabled two? Tabled two?
No, no, we voted two.
We voted? Four, but we tabled three. And I cannot remember why we tabled that.
I'm sorry?
I can't remember why we tabled after-school activities, fourteen hundred three.
We didn't, uh we didn't.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we tabled.
Andrea tabled and Les made this second.
The the conversation, I mean, I don't think there was much discussion, I don't think, I don't think the concern or the questions were about um what was listed and proposed. It was a conversation about potential.
Definitely wasn't.
Potential for environmental camp, grade eight trip, Quebec trip, and those kinds of, those kinds of overnight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The overnight, okay.
But can we go to fourteen dash two, fourteen hundred dash two?
Okay, we're voting on that, but.
I wanna go down to uh girls' track. Is a stipend there sixteen eighty-nine? I know that's a contractual thing.
Yeah.
But how, but don't we have three people involved in that, so each gets sixteen eighty-nine? Or is it sixteen eighty-nine divided by three?
If there are assistant coaches, they get one thousand eighty-two.
Oh, okay, but that, and that's budgeted in?
Yes.
There are, there are five assistant coaches budgeted in here, and depending on the student numbers, they, that's where they have them.
That's all, I just wanted to make sure that was done, okay, no problem, I'm done.
So uh the only, the only, the only, I I guess commentary that I would offer you, if you'd let me, is um it has been discussed, it has been discussed in negotiations in the past, picking up additional stipends to to chase some of what we talked about. That doesn't have to stop us from doing something, I mean, when we talked last week, it was something, anything, just a, you know, some kind of.
I was, I was talking like twenty-five to thirty dollars for an overnight.
Yeah, so. That certainly isn't what was being discussed in negotiations, they were talking about setting up some more reasonable stipends for for those kinds of days, hours, trips, et cetera. So I offer that up, um and if we can, if we can try to collect, I don't know, any other estimates or thoughts?
Are we looking, are we looking at the uh the after-school activities, such as environmental camp, you mentioned, when they do overnight?
Really, I think the, the three that popped up were environmental.
The New York trip or the Washington trip.
Right, yeah. And the trip to uh Quebec.
Quebec.
Quebec. All right, so what are we looking at? How many people are actually involved in all that? Just number, I don't want no name, just total numbers, like for environmental cap, how many people are we actually physically talking?
I bet a dozen people.
A dozen, okay, so we're looking at twelve.
Because some go all week, some only go like two nights, some go.
But they sleep, okay, okay.
Right.
And and the Quebec trip. But they slip, okay, okay. And, and the Quebec trip, how many were you talking?
Five, four, five.
Five, four, five.
Four, okay, let's say five.
Depends on how many kids sign up.
Yeah, right. And then the DC trip, I mean, uh, yeah, I guess that's what we'll call it, the DC trip.
Oh, you're talking about the same as environmental camp?
Twelve, okay. So we're looking at twenty-nine. And how many, okay, so, okay, um environmental camp, we're looking at what, four nights overnight?
Four nights.
And Quebec, we're looking at two?
Yeah. No, three, yeah, three nights.
Three overnight?
Three nights, right, Friday's Saturday's Sunday.
Wow, weekend.
And the three day trips are two nights?
DC, all of them is DC.
DC is three nights. Three nights now.
Okay.
So at twelve, at twelve, five and twelve, you're talking about forty, fifty, eighty, ninety, a hundred nights.
You're talking ten, you're, you're talking ten nights times twenty-nine. You, what are you saying?
Ninety times whatever you do for.
A hundred nights is what I've got.
I, I would like to.
Well, can I do the number?
Yep.
Alright, so we're looking at roughly twenty-nine people, right?
Right.
Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we're looking at a total of ten nights. So you're looking at two hundred and ninety night, uh nights if you go, right?
No, you got twelve people going for four nights, and five people going for three nights, and twelve people going for three nights, it's a hundred nights.
No, I got, yeah, twelve people going for four nights.
That's forty-eight.
Yeah.
Five people going for three nights, that's fifteen more.
Yeah.
And then twelve grade eight nights, uh twelve grade people going three, three more nights, thirty-six, it's ninety-nine. I rounded up the one.
Well, that, that's even better.
Case I go one night.
That's even better.
Okay, what do you propose, Andrea?
I'm, I'm proposing to add three thousand.
How much a person?
Thirty dollars.
For an overnight?
That's an hourly rate that they get if they work after-school hours. You know, I'm, I'm just saying, just. He just wants to give them. I just wanna give them something, just anything. Recognition.
So if they want for five days, it'd be a hundred and fifty dollars they'd get?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, four nights would be a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, but if they want five.
For five nights, it'd be, yeah, right.
We don't have any, they're going.
Right.
So, and how much do you think would cover that?
No, I think we'll keep it at thirty, 'cause we're, I'm gonna keep the cost down, so. And I don't think people, they're not gonna get rich on any of this, they're just looking for something.
Alright, I, I agree with that.
Financial recognition.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to increase this by three thousand.
To forty-three five.
Forty-three thousand five hundred.
And we can adjust the narrative.
Yep.
Okay. Seconded? I'll second it, Frank. Further discussion?
Anybody?
All those in favor? Four zero zero. Okay.
So I took care of fourteen hundred. Um wanna go to twenty-one forty-six, the whole section, yeah, related services, which will finish up the special education and related service conversation.
School psychologist. Psychologists.
So this is just teacher contracted. Existing position. Okay.
We get a motion?
Motion.
No, I'm making one.
Moved Pepper, seconded Frank. Discussion. All those in favor? Four zero zero.
So in um in sixteen seventeen, these are not our psychologists, but additional professional service had to be contracted in outside of the bandwidth that we had with our own. We spent about four grand in sixteen seventeen. Last year, all of the additional services, any that were needed, were covered by the grant. Knowing that we had a, uh, an agreement going into eighteen nineteen, we needed forty-two hundred, and it looks like she'll split it between the grants the same way for this year.
Okay, moved. I'll make a motion. Frank, seconded Andrea. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Next page is your speech and language teachers. Um we don't have a teacher that serves the population of the academy, but we do have a contracted service. Uh you'll see that on the next page.
Moved Pepper, seconded Andrea. Discussion. All those in favor?
First, you have a speech para, uh, a paraprofessional who supports the speech effort uh at the academy right now. That is flat because any change in rate of pay, et cetera, is in the collective bargaining agreement.
Moved. I'll make a motion. Frank, seconded Andrea. All those in favor? Speech, language, pathology, this is contracted services?
Yeah.
Move.
Move Pepper, seconded Andrea.
Well, we didn't use it this year, right?
In, in seventeen eighteen, we used eighty-seven hundred. The budget we put up for twelve, for this year was twelve grand.
Oh, we used eighty-seven, okay.
Yeah, we used eighty-seven last year. This year, we're, we're using it, and then next year, it's a, a seven hundred fifty dollar.
And I split that with the, um, the grant.
No, I'm talking about audiology.
Oh, we're not, okay, you gotta vote on that one?
Yeah, we have to vote on speech language.
Oh, sorry, I thought we did.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Audiology.
Well, we didn't spend any money, right?
We've been carrying a buck, we have, we've been carrying a buck every year, and that, we haven't needed it, 'cause the grants covered whatever we needed, but looking at next year, she, she squeezed on dollars, and so she said, I need to put twenty-six hundred in the, in the district.
But we didn't use any.
And another student, I had another student move in this year.
Oh, you got a student now, okay, fine.
Yes, yep.
Moved Pepper, seconded.
Frank.
I would, uh, can I make, uh, in the discussion?
I have to have a motion to discuss, seconded Frank. Discussion.
Oh, okay, come on. I, I think you need to clarify the verbiage in there. Contracted service for all, for identified student needs, you got one dollar, now you're jumping, you need to say something that we have identified students for the coming year or something, okay?
Yep.
Otherwise, they're gonna look at it.
Yep. And that's one of those ones where you don't know from year to year.
I, I know, but they're looking at a dollar.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, professional services, physical therapy, twenty thousand two eighty.
We actually use twenty-three thousand though.
Yep.
Are we going to be short?
Hope not.
So I, I'm, I'm sharing again with the IDEA grant, I, I went through, so I, I run reports of how many kids we have, how many service hours they require, and I add it up. Uh, sometimes we get re- um referrals in terms of evaluations, and so those I can't account for in a given year, and so that's why I, we went over, because we had um uh inflexible referrals.
Didn't ask you if you went over, I said the actual is twenty-three, your budget is twenty.
You think that twenty, eight, eight, two eighty will cover it?
I, I believe so with the grant, yep.
Motion?
Yep.
Motion, do it, say.
Motion Frank, seconded Pepper. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Occupational therapist, pretty self-explanatory.
Savings here, and you hired a new, you know, had an M four, so you're saving dollars year over year with the time.
Motion?
I make a motion, can, can I make a motion except twenty-one forty-six, six, that whole page, for the sake of time?
Um, I think we should do them real quick.
Okay.
Seconded Andrea, all those in favor?
Alright.
Four zero zero. And the bottom occupational therapy, moved Frank?
Yes.
Seconded Andrea. All those in favor?
I would just put some additional verbiage in that one.
We made it.
So, how do you wanna, Frank, you wanna, before you lose, Frank, you wanna talk about the two and a half?
Yeah, let's do that now, and then can we, can we close it on that?
Other than going back to the guidance area, but the positions that we're talking about in there include present company and the, the position we're picking.
Let's talk about that, but then can we close it at that? Les, do you have a problem with that? Ending the conversation after that?
Tonight, we're not gonna go on?
Well, I gotta go.
I know, we still have a forum.
Well, I'd like to take part in it.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't you make a motion that we adjourn?
I make a, well, don't we wanna get this two and a half, or do you wanna discuss it at another time?
We'll discuss it at another time.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn?
Seconded. Ooh, Andrea, okay, discussion. I'm fine. Whatever we were gonna do tonight, we can do on another night.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Guess we were gonna meet before school.
We're going to adjourn, we haven't adjourned, we are, we are going to adjourn. Uh, did we wanna look at calendars or something?
Yes. Gonna look at when you wanna re, come back.
Really have my calendar with me, but I can email all of you folks.
That's fine.
I'll email all of you.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll email it a little second time.
I think we can finish it by the next meeting.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourned? Four zero zero.